Order. Thank you. Welcome to tonight's meeting. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Money.
Here.
Vice Chair Davis. Trustee DeVarty.
DeVarty here.
Secretary Hatcher.
Here.
Trustee McKnight Morton.
Here.
Trustee Milliken.
Here.
Trustee Peck.
Here.
Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda? Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Moving on to tab A. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the minutes of the September 23, 2025 monthly meeting as submitted. Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes? Thank you. Any discussion? Any revisions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, moving on to citizen participation. First, our WCC EA, Ms. Fournier. Is WCC EA here?
They're not here today.
Oh, they're not here tonight? Okay. All right. We will move on to public comments. If so, let's see. Oh, we have Mr. Haley tonight. Come on up, Mr. Haley.
Good evening, everyone. Chair Haley, Ypsiloe Township. I want to talk a little bit more about artificial intelligence. And I don't know if you know the total gigawatts that DTE can produce for the whole southeastern Michigan. At the Saline Township meeting they had about their data center, which they approved, the DTE guys said they can only have about a little over 10 gigawatts for the whole total southeastern Michigan area. That one in Saline Township is going to be using 1.1 gigawatts out of that 10. There's going to be a Los Alamos University of Michigan data center that's going to be using a portion of that electricity. There's one for Augusta Township data center that's going to probably be 1 gigawatts. If you didn't know, there's also seven other projected data centers for Washtenaw County. And if you add all those up, and if they're all 1 gigawatts each, they're all together will use the total energy that DTE can produce for all southeastern Michigan. So where are the people in there? They don't care. At the energy conference they had in Ann Arbor a couple of weeks ago, the DTE's nuclear energy guy came out and said the truth, that the company itself does not have enough money to build a new nuclear energy facility. So where is that money going to come from? They said building centers aren't going to raise our rates. They're good for everybody. They are lying to us. DTE already told us the truth. They don't have the money. I don't have the money to pay for extra utility rates. I'm already on disability. It's going to come from us. And as people push this, you should know that Amazon just said they're going to lose 500,000 jobs due to the AI automation. The only thing I see is deflationary on the economy. It's not doing anything good but taking away, and people keep pushing it upon us as it a good thing. I would have loved to seen what heard these businesses at the one AI conference she held here had to say, if we're losing hundreds of thousands of jobs due to AI. Firms, lawyer firms are hiring AI programs to be their junior attorneys. So when these senior attorneys retire, who takes their place? We're not looking in the forefront where this can lead to. We're just pushing all headfirst, not leading into where it can go and what we should draw the line to where it can do. Because it's going to raise our rates, kill our environment. I like to leave something good for my daughter and possibly my, you know, future grandchildren, your kids, your grandchildren. The way we're going with these data centers is not the way. You should put a halt to it because the AI is actually regurgitating itself. And they've actually seen that, and within the, you could do an administration code within a letter. As soon as the AI gets to it, it'll do that code for the administration code for the AI. It can get hacked. Okay? So we should take a step back and really think about what we're doing here. Thank you.
Thank you. Vanessa, were there any written communications? Thank you. Okay, moving on to special reports. First, our WCC mission moment. Our college strives to make a positive difference in people's lives through accessible and excellent educational programs and services. VP Whipstock, what would you like to share with us?
Good evening. In the facilities development report tonight, you will see a project in there that was called the Student Center Refrigeration Walking Cooler Replacement Project. This is the main refrigerators and freezers on the first floor of the student center that serviced the food needs of our students in that. These units were 25 years old. They were starting to fail quite often. We were having a hard time getting replacement parts for it. And even the refrigerant in that unit was phased out 10 years ago. So it was time for a replacement. So we put together a bid package, gave it to Purchasing, Purchasing sent out an RFP to get bids. Two weeks later, we got the bids back, and the low bid was from a company called Altech. I had never worked with Altech before. I'll be honest, I'd never even heard of them before. So I got on the internet, of course, started doing some investigation of Altech. So Altech, I found out, you know, services a lot of different refrigeration needs. Further investigated them, they are here in Ann Arbor. They're local. They've done a lot of business throughout Washtenaw County. And from their reviews, very successful at doing it. So I was still somewhat skeptical because these were kind of a unique walk-in coolers. Not everybody does that. So I went back to Purchasing. I said, hey, can you find out from this Altech, have you done these type of refrigerators before? So they sent the message out to them. They replied back and basically said that they've been doing this for over 27 years. They are a trusted vendor of Heatcraft, which we specified. So I thought, okay, this is great. We'll bring them in. We'll do a, we do usually do a big clarification of RFPs to make sure that what we were asking for is what they were bidding, to make sure that our, we were all synced up. So brought them on site. We went through and, you know, everybody's happy. They knew exactly what we wanted. So issued them a PO, started construction. And when they were out here, Mark, who is one of the owners, said, it's, you know, this could be nice to be coming back here. And I thought, well, how's that? And he says, my partner and I are students from Washtenaw Community College. I says, really? I says, if I would have known that, I would have automatically said that you're more than qualified because we talked to you. So anyhow, the process started. They demoed the existing equipment, installed the new ones very quickly, very satisfied with their work. Process went on. Units were installed and they're up and running. To find out more was is that Mark and Jordan, who were students here, also went through the UA program here as well. So, and then they ended up becoming a UA Star Masteries certified in refrigeration and all that, which is a real high certification with the UA. So project is complete. We were happy. They were very happy to get back into Washtenaw to do work for their alma mater. And I think the happiest person out of them all was James in Culinary, who got all brand new equipment. So it was kind of nice to see our students coming back in and doing work. And it was all by coincidence that we put it out on the street and they bid for it and got back in. But they were very appreciative to come back in and do work for us. Yep?
Great. Thank you.
Got a question. Would this be a story interesting to the county residents that we could include in our newspaper on the record that goes out or off the record?
I would think so.
It just seems like these are our graduates and UA participants, and it's like homegrown talent that's right here in our backyard.
Yeah, I mean.
Sorry. Our Director of Communications has already been in touch with them because we believe that it's an awesome story as well, but great minds think alike.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next report, Department of Public Safety Accreditation Status, Provo Spaliki.
Sorry. Tonight, I'm here to talk about the IACLEA accreditation process for our Department of Public Safety. IACLEA is the International Association of Campus Law Enforcement Administrators. IACLEA was created 11, was created by 11 colleges and universities in 1958 to come together and discuss job challenges, mutual problems, and about campus public safety. Today, IACLEA's public membership is over 1,100 higher, excuse me, 1,000 higher rated institutions in 31 countries across the world. It is the largest professional association devoted to excellence in campus public safety and law enforcement, and the members include chiefs, public safety directors, law enforcement officers, and security personnel. So why did we do the accreditation? Why is it important? It provides for top-tier professional development using rigorous standards. It provides operational excellence and continuous improvement. It, those standards provide for a community-centered approach. Accreditation shows the department works with empathy and presence, and it provides for trust and accountability. So a third-party validation for meeting high global standards for campus law enforcement. So the process was actually started by our prior chief, Scott Hilden. You know, starting out as a new police department, he felt it was important for us to go through this process. So we signed on as a candidate in May 2020. Chief Hilden, at that point, designated Kelsey Solins as our accreditation manager to help us get through that process and keep us on track. The self-assessment is we compare all of our policies and programs against IACLEA standards. We made adjustments where necessary to existing policies, and we developed new ones as required. And Kelsey compiled all the proofs of compliance demonstrating that we had met all those compliance standards, and then we scheduled our onsite visit. So this passed earlier this year. We had two campus safety professionals who are trained by IACLEA for an accreditation visit, just like any other accreditation. They came and visited campus, went through all of our processes, all of our standards. They then found, took those findings and committed, submitted them to the commission. The commission reviewed the report and awarded us accreditation effective July of 2025. We were officially notified of our accreditation earlier this month. Our accreditation is good for four years. So IACLEA has accredited 85 agencies across the world. Only six are community colleges. Washtenaw Community Colleges Department of Public Safety is the first and only IACLEA-accredited agency in Michigan. And now would like to recognize the DPS staff, Chief John Leacher, Deputy Chief Darren Shelby, Sergeant Lou Bigliardi, DPS Dispatch Supervisor Isaac Cooljew, and Accreditation Coordinator Kelsey Solins. And many of them are here this evening, and I would like to provide, show the board this accreditation that we want. Get up here.
Wow.
Congratulations.
So I'd just like to say that this process, while it started in 2020, is typically a three-year process, but we were, as we all remember, in the middle of a pandemic. And so everything kind of got delayed by a couple of years. So when we really got into this, kind of like in 2022, our accreditation manager, Kelsey, took the reins. She has been an absolute, just a workhorse through this process. IACLEA doesn't have a footprint in Michigan, so not a lot of presence, not a lot of support. As a matter of fact, accreditation manager courses weren't even offered through IACLEA until December of 2024. So she went through this process just kind of on a wing and a prayer, just kind of figuring it out as she went. And when our managers, when the assessors came in and initially looked at what we had accomplished, based on a mock assessment with people that weren't even affiliated with IACLEA, they initially weren't going to move through this process with us. But then they had a three-hour meeting with Kelsey. They brought me into the meeting, and they realized because she had such a drive, she probably put in 20-hour days for the better part of three straight weeks so we could get everything in place so they could come in and do their assessment and we could get accredited. So she really deserves a ton of credit here. She worked really hard. Isaac worked really hard with our, getting our dispatch proofs together. And Lou Bigliardi, our sergeant, he is actually working right now. He's actually on a call and was not able to be here. And then Darren Shelby, our deputy chief, worked really hard to put a lot of those proofs together as well. Darren's not able to be here because of last minute, he had a last-minute opportunity to get out to Nebraska to see his daughter, who plays college basketball out there. It was a last-minute trip, but he had that opportunity and, you know, family first, so he went out there to take it. But he's sorry, he's not here as well. But anyway, I just want to make sure, and I appreciate the opportunity to recognize them. It was, it was all their work. It was a team effort. So, thank you.
I just wanted to say, I am familiar with the accreditation, and that's only because when, just shortly after I got on, on the trustee board here, I participated in the GLI at Governance Leadership Institute. And it took place in San Antonio, I think it was, if I can remember that far back. And the president for their community college, I think it was like a 10-campus community college, and she was talking about the accreditation and how much of a benefit it had served the college. And no, I didn't bring it back here. You know, I just blame it on the mind and not the heart, but I'm so thrilled that it's initiated here and we're first in Michigan to have it. So I know of two places that has that accreditation. So kudos. Yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. And I'd like to just point out to the board that all these efforts for our community policing effort aligns with our strategic priorities for student success. So this is just an example of work that goes into that. And I'm just so proud of our community policing efforts and how far it's come over, gosh, 10-plus years now. I mean, it's come a long way. So thank you so much. All right. We're moving on to our annual grants update. President Blanca.
Yes. Thank you very much. Annually, we give the board, we share a report with the board about our grants. And our grants also align with our strategic plan, as you know. And I love this priority because it says optimize, optimize. I like that word. Existing and potential sources of funding with a focus on priorities in our core mission. So to me, that's very impactful because that doesn't mean just take. It means do something better than, optimize what you get. So it's very important for us at the college that when we move forward with a grant, we never move forward with a grant because of the money. We only move forward with a grant when it supports our strategy, our mission, or what we're already thinking about doing. Because nine times out of 10, there's a responsibility to continue with that grant, which is why sometimes the funding in one year may not be as much as the next year. But from the initiation of this grant process, am I saying this or are you, Brandon? I'm saying this. Okay. Well, from the year 1999 until 2011, we generated $25,500,000 in grants. From the year 2011 to the present, we have generated over $57 million in grants. And that does not include any of our match dollars. We have, those are the funds that we received. So that's also because of the great work of the people that write the grants. And of course, we couldn't do it without the people who implement the grants. So it's all the way through the college. And with that, I'll give you one of, Chair Brandon Tucker, who happens to be one of our grant, well, one of the people who finds grants for us to pursue. Brandon, so Brandon, would you share an update on the grants, please?
Absolutely. Thank you, President Malacca, and good evening, Board of Trustees. Going to provide kind of an overview of our grants and then want to talk about the impact of those grants. And lastly, we'll round it out by talking about what's next, some opportunities that we're pursuing on the horizon. So we look over the last year, kind of three areas I want to draw your attention to is one of awards, our number of awards. We had 34 awards over the last fiscal year. We had just over $24 million in total grant funding. That is new grants, continuing grants, and renewable grants, which we'll talk about. And then one thing that we've been highlighting for the last few years to the board are letters of support because we are continually asked, and it's becoming more often now, to be partners on grants for U of M, City of Ann Arbor, that sometimes generate revenue to the college, other times generate opportunity. So sometimes we're writing a grant that, for example, University of Michigan, where our students can get on-the-job training in the summer, or apprenticeships, or co-ops. So the letters of support can either be financial or by way of another partnership. Some of our grant sponsors and partners, as you noticed the last few years, this slide continues to grow. It's a mix of higher-ed institutions for year, but then also local from county level, state level, and then some private foundations. We're grateful that these sponsors and partners are committed to doing the work that we're already doing, but then also allowing us to expand our reach and do things that we aren't presently doing and that we have on our roadmap to get done. Over the last fiscal year, which would have been July 1 of 2024 through June 30 of 2025, our total active grants was 24.8 million. Annually renewing grants account for about 2.2 million of that. An example of that would be our Perkins Grant that we get around $850,900,000 a year. But the rest of that would have been new and/or multi-year grants. I think it's important to note to the board that our funding sources continue to be diversified. At one point, the majority of our grants were coming from both state and federal. But now it's kind of a mix of 47% are federal grants, 25% are local foundations or regional foundations, and the 28% is coming from local and state funding resources. This is a lot of different grants, so I highlight kind of the ones that are top of mind. Academic Catch-Up was the grant that continues to support our students that had learning loss through COVID or are coming to the college and aren't at college level. So it provides some additional supports to them. Our ADN to BSN program, which is in partnership with Eastern, has seen great success with almost 200, just a little less than 200, students that are able to come to the college nearly tuition-free, enroll in the three-plus-one with Eastern, and then graduate with the BSN in four years, in many cases at no cost to them. That was a special state initiative by Governor Whitmer, $2 billion to local community colleges. And there is some advocacy to continue that just because the success of the program. Toyota continues to be a great partner to us just down the road, funding a number of things. They, of course, support our foundation through our gala, but they're giving anywhere from $20,000 or $30,000 a year to support our Park Ridge Summer Learning Experience. So we talk about kind of leveraging external dollars to enhance what we're already doing. This is a prime example of that. CCAT, which we've heard about for a number of years now on our third renewal, that allows us to be still the only community college in partnership with Michigan and other larger institutions around mobility and connected transportation. These are just high-level. There's, there's many more, but just to give you kind of a snapshot of the ones that are either new this year and ones that are continuing to renew, have an asterisk behind it. We think about our federal impact, right? There's a lot of conversation around there of the grants are being cut. We have had a small impact comparatively to some of our other higher-ed partners. Four grants overall were impacted through the federal issues that are happening. Ones I want to note is up to or budget delayed. We know that body is, is coming. We've been notified that the grant is approved, but it's just waiting on the offices in Washington that currently have some individuals who aren't working to come back to work to be able to approve those grants and start the dollars to flow. We only had two terminated grants, and actually, our East Asian National Resource Center was a very small grant, $25,000, $30,000 from the University of Michigan, that actually provided us to support our Japanese and some of our languages. That was really a Kickstarter grant to expand capacity. We now have those languages in place, and we're continuing that work, so there was no impact to our operation. And then our LSEP grant, the University of Michigan, that was a two-part grant. One is still going. The other that was terminated was also very small, $25,000, $30,000, and that provided funding for a stipend for one of our faculty members that leads that. We absorbed that through the general fund. It was a small amount. So neither of those terminated grants had any impact on our ability to continue programming. So we were very lucky, and I think part of that, too, was the diversification of our funding. So while we used to skew larger to the federal side, now having a larger amount with foundations and local and state support, that's kind of insulated us from the impact that we know some of our other colleagues have experienced. Just to give you some highlights on kind of the impact, one that I want to showcase is 60 by 30. We know that is a initiative from our state government and my league, Michigan Department of Lifelong Education Advancement and Potential. They have been providing these 60 by 30 success grants to try to ensure that students have the support they need to be able to gain a certificate, a credential, and/or degree. So some examples of those grants are the ADN to BSN program, which I've already mentioned, our College Success, which is our recently awarded $200,000 grant that provides prerequisite support, our Barrier Removal Directive Students, the Reconnect Age Expansion, and then the College Success, which is almost signed. That's going to provide us, as I mentioned in our last board meeting, I believe, to do additional OERs. So they're, they're really trying to fund institutions that are already doing good work with dollars that allow for them to scale the impact. Another one to highlight tonight is our Michigan Economic Development Corporation Strategic Investment on Semiconductors. You might remember that we got just over $2 million to build two pathways, one in semiconductor and microelectronics, and the other in EV battery manufacturing. This was a support to not just the EV lab that we just opened, but was an additional ability for us to be able to build out greater capacity with the equipment and faculty support. This is one that allowed for us to hire a full-time faculty, fully funded by the grant, to be able to build up our microelectronics program. And, and that's really, as President Malacca mentioned, our other purpose of grants that we go after, to support things that we are. to support things that we're already going to do, to give us some additional capacity to do the good work, and to scale that so that it can be sustainable. So one might say, okay, you hired a full-time faculty that's now on a grant. That's something that we already would have added in terms of the faculty lines, but now we had some additional support to be able to do that and provide them with training. So our faculty have been able to go across the country to learn from the best and brightest to be able to bring that knowledge back to the classroom. In addition, we created three new pathways. So the Associate's Degree in Engineering Technology that we brought to the board now a year ago, that was supported by this grant as well. So now students have a greater opportunity to go really three different pathways. As we, many of the room attended, our EV lab was supported by a $2.522 million congressional grant that provided us money not just for equipment, but also, again, for training. But then, you know, it's more than just the dollars that come from grants. Because of the good work that we've been doing, we're now called on pretty regularly, I would say every month, to be a part of grants regionally. NSF grants through Michigan Engineering, for example. They recently got an Accelerating Computing-enabled Scientific Discovery, say that fast, grant, which before, we were not who they called. But now the reputation of our faculty and these programs, they're saying, how can we partner with Washington with some substance versus just saying that we support them from a letter? So now, all of our letters of support, we're going to ask those partners to either provide, what is the financial benefit going to be to the college in terms of revenue? But then also, what is the partnership benefit for our students? And this is an example where they, this grant is going to provide research internships for two WCC students throughout their whole time here in the summer. Well, you would say, okay, we've done good work over the last year. And I want to caution the board that while we're at $24 million, that number could be $5 million next year. It all depends on what opportunities are there. And some of those grants that we have are going to expire this year, and they were one-time dollars. But we always are looking as to what's ahead, right? We know that there's a lot of federal pauses on grants that are coming from Washington that are now impacting kind of the state of Michigan priorities. But we're always going to remain committed to our mission of what our community needs and what our employer base wants. So, you know, you see things like the White House available their AI action plan. We fully believe there's going to be dollars that follow that. You also see that the Education Department is now pushing workforce readiness as a priority. Generally, when there's a major announcement from Washington, dollars flow from Department of Labor, Department of Ed. So our grants team is watching this and monitoring it closely. But it's always going to be aligned with what we see as our priorities. And we see going into the next few years that AI is something that has to be top of mind, right? We've been talking about that. That apprenticeships, we know there's a national push and a statewide push to grow apprenticeships. We've been doing that, but how do we scale that? And how do we look for opportunities that might allow us to do it, to go further faster? Drones and quantum computing. Hydrogen, just down the road, Toyota has asked us, how can we partner with you on hydrogen? So we're investigating, right? That would be the 3.0 of mobility, right? We started with advanced transportation. We've moved to EV and BEVs, but now looking at hydrogen. But then also ensuring that we continue the partnerships with universities, ensuring that we're the front of mind with the state as we talk about college access, that we look at industry who also are calling and saying, hey, we have this grant opportunity. How can we partner with you to ensure your students are in the forefront of our mind as we get dollars? But then, at the end of the day, making sure that we're safe from a cybersecurity perspective and that student success is at the forefront of what we do. So the grants that we go after and will continue to pursue, they're all going to be aligned with our strategic plan. And they're going to be something, as President Malacca always says, that we would do even if we never got a grant. That is part of our daily operation. So happy to answer any questions that the board has. But I want to thank our faculty and staff, who not only write the grants, but in many cases are doing the work. Julia, our Director of Grants Development and Management, and her new hire, who the board just approved, thank you, Susan, and our entire finance team. We work in tandem with the finance team, not just around compliance, not just around budget, but ensuring that it's the right fit for the college and ensuring that everybody that's going to support it has the capacity. So I want to give them our thanks tonight. So definitely would open up for the board for any questions.
And Brandon, I'd like to thank you for your leadership in the grants area. Thank you.
Go ahead, Diana.
How much is the University of Michigan being in partnership with us regarding this? I heard what you said, but I'm still kind of leery about U of M being a partner with us because I don't want, I just have a feeling that they would try to take it over or put too much into it. You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, yeah, definitely. So all of our current grant partnerships with U of M are, they are the lead. And generally, we wouldn't be at the table because they're doing research and development. And so what we bring is that from the technical side, or in one of the cases, quantum computing is one area they're trying to get into where that directly affects AI, right? And what we're trying to do. So for us, they're going to go after NSF to do research, but our faculty are then able to learn and able to maybe have access to their systems that traditionally we wouldn't have access to as a community college.
So that's one avenue. What about the other community colleges that we have been in partnership with? Like McComb and what was the other one? Oh, Wayne County Community College?
Yeah, so you might be mentioning some of our Workforce Intelligence Network grants. So WIN is a regional group made up of the nine community colleges and the Michigan Work Agencies. I previously served on that board. Dr. Rusi now serves on that board. So we're represented at the board level, but they generally have regional grants. For example, the America's Building Back Grant for Apprenticeships. We were a part of all those other community colleges. Everybody got a slice of the pie to be able to build out their apprenticeship work. So most of our regional partnerships with other community colleges come via WIN. And at any given time, we may have three or four grants as part of a regional consortium, where WIN is the fiduciary and the lead, and we're a sub-precipitant. Hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, I do. Thank you.
Maybe referring to D3, C3?
Right, that's the one I was thinking about.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Yeah, so we're still a part of D3, C3 now and going into its fourth year. And that has the regional community colleges as well. Specifically, Schoolcraft, Wayne County, and Oakland are three partners. There's four of us that are partnering together on mobility. Not to duplicate, but to look at what we can leverage, what everybody's doing good, and how we may be able to partner across the region. And that work is continuing with the Chamber, as well as Ralph Wilson and Ballmer, now asking us what do we want to use already allocated dollars for. So I see that work probably wrapping up in the next year or two, but we still do have some dollars to support regional collaboration.
All right, thank you. Yeah, that was, I couldn't think of the name of it, but yeah, thank you.
So I loved seeing that topic list you had because in my experience going into some high schools, I have students who are talking about hydrogen fuel cells. They're talking about drones. They're talking about AI and quantum computing. They want it, and they want to know where to get it. So I love that you seem to be hitting right on where my ninth graders and 10th graders have been. Even, I had a sixth grader who was interested in being a drone pilot because I told him he could get his FAA license at 16 for a drone pilot. And he was like, what? That's so cool. These kids want this. And it aligns really, really well with our student success priorities, too, for new tech. I keep telling my students that there are jobs that haven't even been invented yet because that's, you got to learn this technology and get into it. And don't worry about those older jobs because you're going to have a newer job with this cool stuff. So they want it.
That's good to, that's good to hear.
Any questions? Go ahead.
So I was noting of that $24 million that we saw last year in grants, which is great, about half of it federal. And a lot of that, I'm assuming, is Education Department, which I know some people in the administration want to eliminate, and they're trying to get rid of. And I'm fearful for the Perkins Grant, which is a couple million dollars. Going forward, I know it's going to be a challenge to keep these dollars flowing to educational institutions throughout the country and that we can get a piece of that, that goes to help our students. Is, and I know they always address these issues at the Legislative Summit, which happens in February. I'm wondering if, I don't know if it would be appropriate, but maybe a staff person who works on grants to go to that summit and work with some of the National Association of Community College people about grants, like actually meet in person and talk about some of those federal grants, which are half of the grants that we got last year, and see what's happening on the ground with the current administration and what Congress is doing to make sure these dollars keep flowing. And I know a lot of people, Republicans in Congress, want to keep apprenticeship dollars and workforce dollars going and trust community colleges and our missions as a path forward for federal dollars. But I'd like to make sure people in our administration, you know, I go, but I don't work full-time on this stuff. I'm a volunteer board member. And it would be maybe helpful for administrative staff person, one of the people that works on these grants, to go to that Legislative Summit and meet and talk to some of the National Association of Community College people about what's happening on a lot of these federal dollars moving forward. Because I want us to be there at the table to keep getting those dollars. And I think for a staff person, it probably benefits them and our work here at the college more than it does me as a part-time volunteer serving in a board capacity to be at that conference.
Go ahead, Bill.
Dave, there are ACCT administrators that are available by email, by phone. In the meantime, you've got Director of Public Policy, Director of Government Affairs for ACCT. They spoke at the conference in New Orleans, very capable. I'm sure that as much as you'd like to stump them with a question, I'll bet they can answer it.
I don't want to stump them. I want our staff working on this to be, to meet them and be, you know, have a personal relationship with them.
They're accessible. That's what I, the point I wanted you to make.
I know they are. Thank you.
Are there questions here? Thank you.
And just to follow up, the federal grants, just so you know, so the board understands, we only have one federal grant that comes through DOE. And that actually was our congressional grant that we just opened, the EV lab. The rest of the money has been flowing through DOL, which is good, you know? So just in terms of the impact, I wanted you to know. That could change, you know, but as of today.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay. Next special report, our IT annual update. Mr. Tyler, hi.
Good evening, Board of Trustees, friends of WCC and fellow colleagues. Here to give you an update on IT. Two of my passions, IT and IT at Washington, in particular. So thank you for giving me the time and space for this update. This I chart that you see, some of you may recognize, came at a time when we had just experienced network outage. There was no connectivity, no internet access for, I think it was three days. Glad I wasn't here at the time because that would have caused a lot of stress and consternation. But we did survive it. But what it did reveal was the importance of IT to an organization and to this institution. And so as a result of that, there were some strategic planning sessions and some discussions about where we take IT here on campus. And I love this chart because it really shows, you know, kind of like a time capsule, where we've been and where we were intending to go back in, I think it was 2019. So if you'll follow me on this journey, first and foremost, I want to talk to you about the top 10 issues in IT from an Edge of Cause perspective. And for those of you who aren't familiar, Edge of Cause is an internationally known conglomeration of IT professionals who specialize in IT in higher ed. It has about 2,100 member institutions, including us, hopefully, as well as over 115,000 individual members, of which I am a part of as well. In fact, their conference is going on as we speak, and some of our staff members are attending. So Edge of Cause, every year, they do a survey of all of their constituents, and they identify the top things affecting IT in the higher ed space. So I'm going to run through these as quickly as I can. Two that were tied for number 10, first being building bridges, not walls. And that's just talking about equitable access to technology for all of our students, faculty, and staff. Supportable, sustainable, and affordable infrastructure. And this is really talking to developing policies and procedures centered around technology for, you know, informing a technology strategy. We also, on my right, taming the digital jungle. This is about IT governance. Traditionally, you know, IT is very draconian and say, you know, thou shalt move to this particular device. Well, we're trying to become better at that, really involving and including all of our key stakeholders and developing that strategy in partnership. So that's a work in progress. Eight, putting people first, kind of dovetails with number nine, making sure we not only roll out technology in an equitable way, involving our stakeholders, but also upskill them, train them, you know, decrease that digital divide and make sure that we have digital literacy amongst our constituencies. And finally, number seven, using technology to personalize services. So this is a great thing that we're able to do today, especially with the advent of AI and some other technologies. Moving on, number six, institutional resilience, making us, you know, future-proof is the way I like to couch it. Making sure that we're able to withstand all of the changes that are happening in the industry, in the higher ed space, and being very competitive as we do that. Number five, of course, near and dear to me because it talks directly to my position and role here at WCC. And that's making sure that we're leading a digital strategy by getting buy-in versus compliance, you know? So when I worked in corporate America, I could, you know, make edicts and say, thou shalt. But here, and I believe even in corporate America, we should partner with all of our colleagues in the functional areas, figure out what their, you know, pain points are, and how can we leverage technology to make that better. Number four, making sure we're safeguarding our privacy and all of our data. So this is a highlight of what our Chief Information Security Officer is responsible for, ensuring that our students, faculty, and staff, and prospective students' data are protected. Number three, using technology to make a friction-free experience for our students. So I come from a day where we stood in long registration lines that kind of wrapped around the building and the financial aid office. But we're using technology to make those things better now, which is great. And some of that is through, number two, administrative simplification, improving processes and procedures, getting rid of paper as much as possible and getting efficiencies there through economies of scale with technology. And then finally, number one, the data empowered institution. How can we collect data so that we can be on this path of continuous improvement and make strategic data-driven decisions? So that's very important and highlighted by my colleagues who participated in the survey. So that's the Edge of Cause perspective. I also want to provide for you the industry perspective as well. Dr. Tucker stole a lot of my thunder, but you'll see a lot of overlap here. We didn't synchronize, by the way. We didn't share notes. So this tells you that this is definitely legitimate. AI was mentioned several times this evening, and I want to call out two different forms. AI was mentioned several times this evening, and I want to call out two different forms of AI. We have this agentic AI, which a lot of people may not be familiar with. This is how we can create what are called AI agents that do work for us even while we're sleeping. So if you're planning on taking a flight, you can create this agent that goes and looks across all of the different sites, Travelocity, Orbits, Delta, Southwest, and it will find the cheapest flight for you at the time and space that you want to take that flight, and then keep track of it from then on and give you highlights of when that price may drop before you actually make your purchase. So this is great use of AI. And then generative AI, most of us are familiar with. This is the form of AI that we can interact with, usually through this process called prompting, where you type in a message and it gives you an intelligent response. Some of those responses need to be vetted before you take it as gospel, but it is definitely something that's taken off over the last couple of years. Disinformation security is very important in industry as well. Because of the advent of AI, we have these things called deep fakes, where they can take your likeness and your videos and pictures and kind of manipulate those images and videos to say or do something that that individual never said or did. It's very scary. You know, two years ago, you could tell very easily if it was AI. Today, even with my fine-tuned eye, it's very difficult. So be wary of this. And also, there's a lot of fake social media accounts they're finding, you know, Facebook and Instagram, they're doing their best to get rid of these fake personalities created by AI. But they are out there. So we need to be cognizant of that. And we're developing tools to try to thwart these as well. Quantum computing, my colleague also mentioned this as well. Computers are changing. They're, they're adapting, they're becoming better. You know, traditional computers, and this is the best analogy I can give because it's a very complicated topic, but traditional computers think in terms of black and white. These quantum computers, they can see the whole spectrum of colors and process them all at once. So they're no longer limited in capability. By the way, that might reduce the need for, for data centers as we create these computers that now the size of a notebook can operate in an environment where they're more powerful than a room full of computers. So that's where we're headed, and that in combination with AI is, is where we're going. We also have spatial computing. A lot of you've heard of virtual reality, but there's also augmented reality. Mixed reality is kind of a hybrid of the two. And, you know, I joked earlier, it was funny, when I was younger, my mom used to tell me to back up from the TV so I wouldn't go blind. And now we're strapping two TVs onto our face, so. And then finally, poly-functional robots. Recall Dr. Tucker's slide about grants, and there was a slide in there with the robotic arm, I don't know if you caught that, but this is where we're going. Even with EVs and their ability to be self-driving, they're literally roving robots with AI driving everything. So this is the future. We now have robots that can actually, you know, compete with humans in chess and run marathons and in fact, wash the dishes, which was always the dream, right? And the clothes and fold them. So yeah, looking forward to that future. So those are the two, you know, intersection of what we see in industry as well as from the higher ed IT space. Now I'm going to drill down specifically into what we're focused on here at Washington. Of course, the safety and security of our faculty, staff, and students is paramount, as well as our prospective students and any affiliates that we may have. So a lot of the theme of our progress is going to be centered around security. And I must say, unfortunately, the more you increase security, you know, unfortunately that, that takes a hit to customer satisfaction. There are things that we have to do to keep us safe, but at the same time, we have to do those things unfortunately. So student success is also paramount. We're trying our best to centralize our infrastructure so that we have less to learn, less to become subject matter expertise. About, you know, they always say if you focus on a few things, you can do that better than, you know, stretching yourself too thin. Homogeneity, making sure that we have standards in place for likewise, the same reason. Homogeneity as well falls in that line. And then our cloud-first philosophy. So everything is kind of moving and shifting to this thing called the cloud. Again, I just call it someone else's computer. It's always better to lease or rent from someone else when something's commoditized than to do it yourself, so that way we don't have to worry about the maintenance and the administrative overhead of that. We want to follow industry standards and best practices always, whenever we can. We have a high focus on connectivity, especially with that three-day outage that we had, you know, way back when that we won't talk about anymore. And then finally, process automation. Everyone's heard of this paperless society that we've always been trying to get to. Don't think we'll ever get quite completely there, but we're working our way towards that. So those are some of the tenets I want you to keep in mind as we roll through our functional areas in ITS. First and foremost, we have our technical support area. This is the one that most people are familiar with. This is what we affectionately call our help desk, that you call whenever you're experiencing a technical support, support problem. And they provide just that. Strategic Services is our IT organization responsible for managing all of our projects and programs. Very, very highly engaged in this Banner deployment and migration. User Services, they provide desktop support. So the computers that you have before you, if there's an issue, they're responsible for resolving those issues in a timely fashion. Application Services, this is our core enterprise resource planning group. So ERP system is basically the system that runs the business. If you've heard of QuickBooks or Quicken, it used to be in my day, that's one aspect of running a business, your financial management. But we also have human resource management. We have facilities management. All of those systems are in our ERP that we use today called Banner. Security Services, this is again, a huge focus in, in IT, especially today with AI that's making our job more difficult. But cybersecurity is, is very important. We'll talk more about that in closed session on Thursday. Technical Services, this is our infrastructure group, our network, telecommunications, the Wi-Fi that we use in this room, and all of our servers that are over in our data center in the student center. So that infrastructure is maintained by a specific group who's responsible for maintaining those devices and equipment. And then last but not least, we have our media and event services. They provide all of our, you know, support for our microphones, our speakers and, by the way, I just want to acknowledge, I don't know how much acknowledgement he gets, but it takes a lot to put something. I've been at several institutions, and the guys, the team here are great. They make it look so easy. So I just want to give them a round of applause. Thank you so much. But they also provide our classroom technology support as well. So it's an awesome job, and I applaud them for that. And with that, I want to swing back to our technical support because this is typically, again, our first line of interaction with our customers. So our technical support, again, they provide technical support if you have an issue, any issue related to IT. They're our first line of contact for, for our constituents. Over the last year or so, from August 24 to September 25, we've addressed over 11,880 cases. That could be phone calls, it could be emails. That's an awesome amount of requests. Now, you know, even though that's an impressive number for us to deal with, my goal is to get that down because the more people call, that means the more problems there are. So we want to minimize that as much as possible. But I want to call your attention to the, to the right-hand side of this slide, where 76% of those requests are student requests, 8% are staff, and 4% are faculty. And over, swing back over to the left, the top cases that we've gotten over the last year are related to this thing called multi-factor authentication, which I'll explain in a later slide. Portal, which is an application that we use internally for business process management, and then of course, email. So some of the key accomplishments that we've accomplished in the last year. First and foremost, again, our media services team really, really have done a wonderful job supporting all of our trade events and things that we have here on campus that I, I really appreciate. And that, you know, tails, again, setting up devices, making sure Wi-Fi is accessible so that these trade shows can go off, trade events can go off without a hitch. We also migrated from Windows 10 to Windows 11. I know that sounds extremely technical, but all of us, you know, have devices before us, some of us three or four. This is something imposed on us by Microsoft. So Microsoft is literally terminating their support for Windows 10. And you have until the end of this month to, to move from Windows 10 to Windows 11. So we've moved and migrated a majority of our devices to Windows 11. We have like 20 or so left, so we're down to the onesies and twosies. But this is an awesome thing that we've accomplished over the last year. We also migrated our learning management systems. These are the systems that our students and faculty use for assignments and grading and doing assessments. So massive undertaking as well. We moved from another system called Blackboard to our new system called Canvas, again, with an eye towards IT security and making things easier and more effective for our faculty and students. We migrated our students from Gmail to Outlook. Now, we still use the Google products, but this allowed us to pull the students into the same environment as our faculty and staff. So that allows us, again, I call back homogeneity on my previous slide, we want to make sure we have a unified system that makes communication and collaboration much easier. And we also now can have them be in a more secured environment. Unfortunately, Gmail was using a different version of their system called Google Apps for Education that didn't allow us to control and authority. So when certain members of the team might have left, we lost access to that information. Now we have that information. It's owned and operated by us for all eternity, at least as long as Microsoft stays in business. A lot of you have heard about this migration from Banner living on campus to Banner in the cloud. Again, the cloud is just somebody else's computer. They handle the maintenance, the TLC. All we have to do is use it. So we're moving our Banner environment to the SAS environment. That stands for Software as a Service. That's a new nomenclature for this commoditized cloud service that they have. We've already migrated over 160 reports, which I mentioned in the last board, or two board meetings ago. And we've completed what's called a mock trial. That's moving all of our data over, making sure that everything works, kicking the tires on the environment, just, you know, really flexing that environment to make sure it's going to withstand, you know, subsequent trials and tests that we're going to have to do over the next year. Multi-factor authentication, I mentioned this earlier. So traditionally, when you log into something, you use a username and a password. Username is typically your email address or what have you, and then your password is something you select or choose. And the problem with that, if someone steals your password or somehow comes across the little password that's written on your sticky note on the underside of your computer, they now have access to whatever you have access to, right? So multi-factor authentication says, okay, let's see who this person is, if they're really who they say they are. So you get a prompt on your phone, it will pop up, you say, yes, that was me, and you're good to go. Okay? So this has helped our campus tremendously. Again, there were some growing pains associated with that, but very necessary because we have a lot of bad actors out there taking over people's accounts, sending emails to the federal government, not here, but somewhere else. And they, they can do that when they get control over your accounts. Or a popular one that our students fall for is, hey, make $400 in one week from home. You don't even have to, you know, get out of bed. And they fall for it every time. So this helps mitigate those types of things. And this, another one that I can't take credit for because it happened before my time, but I'm very proud of it. Nevertheless, we've partnered with our CIS department and built out what's called, you know, we're referring to as Student Data Center. This is an actual picture. Some of my other pictures were AI-generated, but this is real over in our TI building. And now we have the capability for our students to get real-life, hands-on experience with all of the things that we've talked about related to IT today. So this is a great thing that will make them, you know, workforce-ready after they finish their program. We've also automated the check-in process for our writing center. Traditionally, you know, they were signing in using pencil and paper. I'm sure you've all filled out that sign-in sheet, maybe at the doctor's office. So we automated that using, and computerized it. So now all of that, you know, happens a lot more smoothly and it's more operationally effective and efficient for our students, boosting that student customer satisfaction. We're also working in partnership with Public Safety as well as our Facilities Department to handle physical, physical security, which is really important as well. So we got the cybersecurity, but we also have physical security that we have to take care of. So this includes cameras, it's blue light phones, emergency phones that you'll see around the campus. It also includes cameras for our testing center, because that's a proctored environment to make sure our students are doing what they're supposed to do. And it includes, you know, paging systems to let people know when there's an event that happens on campus. So all of these are layered security approaches that we're taking to protect our campus. Some other key accomplishments, I can't list them all unfortunately for the sake of time. So I pulled out these three, which have direct student impact. Number one, we've implemented a system called Campus Logic that helps us with our SAP appeals. Parchment, all of our students are hopefully moving on to bigger and better things after they leave here. Getting and ordering a transcript and having that sent to the location of their choice is a big accomplishment that this system provides capabilities for. And then last but not least, Scholarship Universe to help students find and fill out and flesh out their financial needs for, for their higher ed and, you know, education. So I retreat back to this wonderful slide for any questions that the board may have. Yes?
Internationally, cellphone theft is supposed to be running at epidemic levels. Do we see it locally?
Do we see cellphone theft locally?
Cellphone theft.
Yes, it is happening at an alarming rate. So put your.
What can we do?
Put your biometric, you know, finger point. If you don't believe in that, put a swipe password or your four-digit code on there just to ensure that, you know, if someone else does get your phone, that they can access it to, you know, have access to it. And more importantly, turn on Find My Phone. So Android has their version, Apple has their version. With that, you can locate your phone anywhere within a few meters. And remotely erase it, as well as nag the person who stole it. Even when it's turned off. Yeah.
Any other questions? Oh, go ahead, Ruth.
Recently, I've been concerned about academic integrity in testing. And I'm wondering how IT can help with that.
Yeah, so one of the things I mentioned with the advent of AI, in our testing center in particular, we're looking at tools to detect AI. None of them are perfect, but they're getting better and better. It's funny that AI is causing the problem, but it's also part of the solution. So whoever made that deal is making money hand over foot. But we're also partnering with our SITL department and others to ensure that our Canvas, which is our learning management system, has built-in capability as well. So they have, you know, TurnItIn, which are, which is a product that you can get that also does some assessment. We also have the capability to assist with other types of academic integrity issues as well, all using technology. But none of it's perfect. It's still going to require a human, a reasonable human to ensure that we're not completely relying on technology to provide that feedback. Yeah, I mentioned a couple. There's another one I can't remember the name of right now.
Copy Leaks.
Yes.
So we presently use Copy Leaks, which is the doer better version of TurnItIn to support faculty in identifying whether or not what's been submitted is AI. And it gives them a score, and then the faculty can go back and say, okay, this looks like it's okay, or it looks like it's not.
Yeah. And we're also encouraging faculty to use the testing center. So that's a proctored environment with some of the cameras that I mentioned to ensure academic integrity as well.
Go ahead, Bill.
One more question. At the end of this month, what will the lifespan of Windows 10 have been?
That's a good question. That's a trivia question that I actually don't know the answer to. I think it's been about a year and a half to two years, yeah. It's, that window's getting shorter and shorter. I mean, we were on Windows 95 for several years, but now every year, just like phones, I don't know if you remember, but phones used to be able to have a phone and not have to worry about getting a new one for several years. But now there's, there's this annual cycle they're trying to stick to, probably, you know.
Faster and faster.
Exactly. Thank you for the great question.
Go ahead, Dave.
So I'm really impressed with the technical support. 11,000 some odd tickets over the course of a little over a year. That's like over, over 30 a day.
Yeah.
How big is our staff that responds to that?
Yeah, so we have a couple of teams. Yeah, so we have a couple of teams. The total number, I believe, is 12, but on one side of the gate, we're, we expand and grow based on the time of year. So if it's the beginning of a term, we expand the support to make sure we're able to accommodate the higher requests. It is cyclical. I didn't show the chart, but August, of course, January, and right before the summer sessions start, we have the most tickets.
And are those, are those Illusian employees that you bring in?
Some, some are.
And that we do have some in-house staff.
Yeah, I mean, they're all technically Illusian, but some are in-house versus off-site.
Okay. And do we have a sense or do we track customer satisfaction with the response?
Yes, that's a great question.
And I'd like to see that. I'm assuming it's great.
Yeah.
But I'm hoping that it's really great.
Yeah, last I checked, our internal IT help desk was 4.8 out of 5, which is great.
Get a report monthly from them.
That's great. And I, that's my concern with technical support, that we're providing adequate technical support and that it satisfies the needs of the customers, and it sounds like it is. Thank you very much.
It is, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, moving on to tab B, everyone, our monthly reports. First, the personnel recommendations. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the personnel recommendations as submitted. Do I hear a motion? Thank you. Any discussion? Go ahead, Ruth.
Will we get a organizational chart?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
An organization chart soon?
Who are you talking to?
HR.
Yes.
The answer is yes? That's a good answer.
Okay.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, moving on to tab C, the financial reports. Before we get started, what would you like to highlight for us?
Well, I'd like to highlight the results after the first three months of the year. This will be the first review of the numbers that we've seen this fiscal year. Last month, I reviewed the results of fiscal year '25, so now we'll look at how we're doing so far in fiscal year '26. Starting out with fall tuition, you'll see here that we have a favorable variance if you look at the far right side of the chart, which I'm usually looking at. So fall has been up, both the enrollment as well as the credit hours, about 4%. We're usually conservative with our budget consumption or assumptions, but this year we actually had budgeted a 2% increase, and we exceeded even that 2% increase at 4%. So you can see there that we're at 236, and student fees are going up in line with that. You also see that briefly, I'll talk about the spring tuition. Now, at the end of fiscal year '25, there was a minor negative variance, you may recall. So what we have to do for the spring/summer semester, part of that semester falls in one fiscal year, part of it falls in the other fiscal year because the dividing line is July 1. So we have to, when we're doing the budget, we have to take a guess at how much is going to fall on either side of July 1. It's usually about 65 before July 1, 35% after July 1. This year, it was 60-40. So in other words, a lot more fell into this fiscal year, which is why you see that 449,000 favorable there. So total tuition and fees, very favorable so far this fiscal year. Local property taxes, there's a minor negative variance there, 52,000. That's simply timing. You know, we estimate how much we're going to receive across the fiscal year, and so I'm confident that we're perfectly in line with where we should be. State appropriations, slightly favorable. You may have seen, we were, we had budgeted 2%, we got 2.7%, which was among the highest of the community colleges in the state. In terms of trade partnerships, we do have a negative variance there, about 108,000 so far. That is timing. We're expecting that that should catch up around the middle of the fiscal year, so I'm not concerned about that right now. In terms of investment income, starting out very favorably, we're always a little bit conservative with our interest rate assumptions. So we had budgeted around 3%. It has been higher than that, although interest rates are falling. In fact, there's a Federal Fed Reserve meeting tomorrow, and there might be a interest rate reduction of a quarter point. In terms of other, we've had a little bit of a slow start in community enrichment and contract training, so a little bit negative variance, you see $9,800, but there's still time left in the fiscal year to compensate for that. And finally, in auxiliary activities, that is our Conference Center and some public surplus sales, but again, favorable so far. So total revenue, again, very much on track and, well, in fact, ahead of track. In terms of expenditures, again, very early in the year, pretty, everything is favorable so far. You know, we've, some of this is due to personnel, although there are fewer vacancies than there were last year, but there are still some vacancies, so that does create some savings. I would highlight too, utilities is on track, 72,000 favorable. Last year, we started off in the hole. This year, we're starting off positive. And most of that favorability is electricity. So about 2/3 of that is electricity and about 1/3 of it is gas. So in total, I would say of that 2.3 million favorable, I'd say about 1.6, I would say, is permanent at this point. But some of this is going to be re-timed later in the fiscal year. Sometimes people think they're going to spend something early in the year, they end up spending it later in the year. So that's, unless there's any questions, that's all I wanted to highlight.
Questions?
I'd like to move that the Board of Trustees receive the financial reports for September 2025. General Fund, Capital Fund, combined schedule of investments, all funds as submitted.
Do I hear a motion? Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Next, tab D, the Facilities Development Report. BP Whipstock.
I'd like to update you on some of the more notable projects or more visible projects on our list. First being the Maintenance Garage. We are still on track to be completed in mid-November. One of the things we did discover and we corrected was there was, in some areas of the Maintenance Garage, there was literally no insulation to very little insulation. We ended up, oop, we ended up insulating the entire Maintenance Garage, as you can see. Even in the brickwork, we put, blow-in insulation to try to keep that building a little bit Next update on the Maintenance Garage, we had talked about before, that we discovered a lot of the rotten or salt-eaten steel on the bottom half. Our correction was to put cement block four foot up in, on the Maintenance Garage. As you can see, now it is complete. And actually, to me, it's a lot, aesthetically, looks better this way. Parking Lot 2 and 3 repairs. Parking Lot 3 had been done previously. We just got done with Parking Lot 2. One of the things in Parking Lot 2 that we kind of knew ahead of time and prepared for was a lot of our stormwater drainage was collapsed and cracked. So we did replace all that in Parking Lot 2. As all you can see, we did a lot of curb repairs that had been damaged in Parking Lot 2 as well. Finished product just a few weeks ago, and it's in service as of now. One of the other projects we're just starting to kick off, we're getting the materials in, is the walkway lighting converting it to LED lighting. Material is just arriving, so we should be kicking this off within the next week or Student Center restroom renovations coming to a final close. We're starting to put in the fixtures, the tile is up, cabinets are going in. It's on track to be completed by the end of November, or actually really before the winter break. Substation, the SRB substation expansion, this was necessary to accommodate growth in that area and also to accommodate the EV chargers. One of the things that we had to do is we had to change out an old 1,200 amp panel to a new 1,600 amp panel. That was complete. Now, the transformer has to be changed out, and then on November 6th and 7th, DTE is going to be coming in and pulling out that transformer and putting in a new one. So for a day and a half, we're going to be without power in that building. The other project is the LA Auditorium is underway. We're starting to put the finishing touches on it. Painting's being done, carpeting's being installed, and that's on target to be ready for the winter semester. Other than that, any questions?
Got any questions?
I just have a general question.
Go ahead.
So with the renovation or upgrade, if you will, for the LA Auditorium and throughout all the interior spaces here on campus, what is the duration of the materials that we use to upgrade? Are we looking like at 15 years, we're going to do this again? 20 years, we're going to do this again? Like, how long? How long does this use? I mean, this is just a general question that I just thought. Hope it doesn't sound dumb.
It's a good one. It's a smart one.
But you know, we do have to, you know, we do have to upgrade.
Oh, absolutely.
So it's like, well, how often do we have to go back and upgrade?
Some of the areas are different. As you can imagine, it's depending on how their use is. We just upgraded the facility pod areas this past summer. The last time that was done was almost 15 years ago. So that's how long they got out of it. So an auditorium, you remember, I think, how long?
Nearly 30 years.
30 years?
Since we last updated it. But I think in our conversation with the vendors, it's probably like a 20 to 25-year lifespan.
Okay. Well, that's good. That's good in the sense that, you know, we're, the materials have gotten better in itself, you know, constructed better. And then how we use those, those spaces, you know, of course, depending on what is being used for, we're taking care of it. And then, you know, with the, with your leadership, you're staying on top of it. So it's great. Thank you.
Yeah, we do have, well, we call it the five-year plan, but we have different areas that we've outlined that we're going to be upgrading. You know, lobby areas, the old E lobby is going to be upgraded coming next year. So we do have a plan to start renovating or keeping up with renovations throughout the campus.
Great.
Go ahead, Eileen.
Could you please talk about the sea sewer repairs and the piping repairs? Are those related to the restroom project?
They are. So once we open up spaces and we look at, we inspect the piping and all that, if we see any signs of bad decay, we're replacing it because we just don't want a pipe to rupture after we've just upgraded the bathroom. So we do a lot of inspections. We've gotten rid of all the galvanized pipe in the student bathrooms, we went to copper. And we're doing that with the same thing with the, you know, the storm drains and also the sewer piping. A lot of it's the old cast iron, and that has about a 30-year life to it. And some we have found that have cracks in it. It may have not been leaking, but there's cracks, so we automatically repair it.
Thank you. Go ahead, Diana.
Just thought of something. I'm going to the transportation vehicles, the EV vehicles have, I know we have some, but are we, I don't know how many we have, and are we planning to get more?
We are. We, actually, we just got rid of our old 2003 G6, and we got a new Ford EV Escape in for that. We have a couple electric vans that our trades are using, and we're starting to, actually, we're starting to actually thin out our fleet vehicles. We just weren't using them enough. You know, we, some would sit for quite a while before somebody would use it. So we're trying to get to a pool type of system. So we're reducing our fleet, but then also going to the EVs. But we're at a stopping point in some areas, like the Kubotas that you see. There's nothing out there for us yet that would replace a Kubota where you could put utility tools, blowers and all that on it. So we're kind of stuck in that area. But everything that we've been able to transfer over to EVs, we have been doing that. I think with campus security, I think we're at nine now. For facilities and campus services, yeah. Nine vehicles.
Nine.
Yeah.
I mean, are you planning to get more than that?
Yes. We, we've actually, are purchasing an electric HiLo, which is on order. We have propane HiLo. That's gone, the EVs on its way. Wherever there's an opportunity to get EVs, we have been getting those EVs in.
I guess where I'm going, I'm not an EV person yet. Maybe I'm too old school. But how is our system, our infrastructure, how will we be able to handle what is being asked of having a fleet of EVs?
Over the past three years, we've been upgrading, testing and upgrading our systems. Like I just said, with the SRB, we upgraded that system to handle all the EV chargers we're putting in. Last month, I think I reported out that we were just complete with the OE expansion of the infrastructure. We added 2,000 amps of service to accommodate growth. So we've done an evaluation campus-wide of where we are at energy-wise, and some of it is just by changing the infrastructure, get it too far, but you could have a building that has a 200 amp panel, but, and everything's connected. It's what they call connected load, that panel's full. But as we do energy infrastructure changes, like going to LED lights, a 20-amp breaker may not necessarily need to be a 20-amp breaker anymore. We can reduce it down to a 10 and pick up extra 10 amps off of that panel. So we've been doing that. In fact, we just did it with parking lot lighting. We freed up a lot of space in TI and moved it over to the MLB. So we've been rebalancing and adding capacity to our infrastructure.
Another thing I think you probably could add is off-peak charging, so that you're not charging at 3:00 in the afternoon and that it's happening overnight while the equipment is parked.
You're, yes, you're correct. The only difference would be the public chargers, you know, there's no off-peak whenever they plug in with that. But yes, we, we actually meter our facility stuff separately, so we know when we should be plugging in.
Several things. The transformer, is that a DTE expense or R expense?
Yes.
DTE or both?
Actually, both. Yes, it's their transformer, but we have to pay for them to put it in.
Okay. Okay, that kind of makes sense. And I totally support moving all this stuff to LEDs. I'm anticipating, as we do with the walkway lighting, we'll see utility cost savings, without a question. The EVs, I know the battery performance is weaker in the winter, and if we're using plowing vehicles for snow plows, does that have any impact?
We don't have any vehicles yet that are EVs that plow snow. It just.
Not realistic.
The technology is not there for us to do that.
Okay.
Not yet. It's the same thing with the Kubotas. You know, we got snow blowers on that, and EV technology isn't there yet for that type of equipment. Now, our EV lawnmowers and stuff, man, those things were great.
Right.
They much prefer having those zero-turn EVs than the gas ones now.
Right.
We're going to EV leaf blowers, electric leaf blowers. So there, everything that we've been able to convert, we have been converting.
Okay. And then this follow-up to Eileen's question on the storm drainage, we're upgrading the materials of those drains as we replace them to modern materials that are less, that have a longer lifespan.
Well, yeah, we, the Well, yeah, the cast iron piping, a lot of the stuff that was in the Student Center was what they call spun pipe, which was not a very good technology. So we're getting, whatever we replace, we go to a solid cast iron pipe.
And then for the parking lot, it looked like vinyl PVC?
PVC, yeah.
And what had been there?
Same thing.
So it's, okay.
Yeah, it's just been there quite a while and actually, you know, the parking lots should have been done, you know, I was going to say a few years ago, but as you know, as the parking lot gets old, if you don't repair it right away, it sinks and crushes the, the base. And when it crushes the base.
It breaks up the pipes. Okay, gotcha. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to remarks. Do any board members have remarks tonight?
I have a handout.
All right, go ahead, Ruth.
It's an ad in May 15th, 1966, in the New York Times, for positions, teachers and counselors at Washtenaw Community College in Ann Arbor, Michigan.
1966, the salary range, 6,500 to 1,2,500.
Limited sick leave, life hospice, long-term disability, accidental death, travel accidents, tax sheltered annuity and sabbatical leave policy. That's how we got one faculty who'd been a cab driver in New York City. Should we name?
Cool. Thank you for sharing. Any other comments?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Just, oh, I'm sorry. Did you want to?
Go ahead. Go ahead. Happy birthday.
Aw, thank you. What was I saying? Oh, so myself and two of my board members took a trip to New Orleans for the National ACCT Board of Trustees Conference. And it was really great, always very great, very great. This, this one particular session I went to was called the Big Pivot. And really, it's, it's, it was based, is based on what we're, what we're experiencing now, the change in the landscape of higher ed. And the biggest takeaways I took from it, and I, I wrote out these notes because it was quite, quite dear to me to make sure that I bring this to you, you know. So our responsibilities as board trustees and administrators is to embrace the change and bridge the gap of what, you know, is currently done and to connect those change, how we can connect it to strengthen our, our strategies for success in higher ed. This whole, the whole thing about being woke is not being blind to what's going on around us, but to be aware that we have to provide our students with the space that they feel safe, mentally and physically, for us to continue to deliver best career earning programs. And, you know, Dr. Tucker is very good at describing those here at the, at our board meeting and that they can compete on a global market, you know. And so, yeah, you have to be aware. You can't just venture out here with eyes wide shut, you know, to, to what is important, you know, in what we do here. The term diversity, equity, inclusion, as we know, all, it's always been around. It's nothing new. We should view it not as a, as a detriment or roadblocks to achieving student success based on their background, culture, et cetera, but to embrace it and celebrate it. Because leaders cannot grow if leadership does not lead. And that is so very important in everything that we do. And last of that is professional development for board trustees must be ongoing. There were, we had a breakout session, so some of that is intertwined in here when I'm talking about my takeaways. Training is essential, essential for board trustees to remain solid as a governing body, how to manage and navigate the new federal landscape for higher education and for trustees and administrators alike to be flexible, accept change. Dr. Tucker had mentioned about, you know, grants, that they don't come from just one, one source. We have another source. But what happens if that source all of a sudden changes? Are we flexible and accept the change? To absorb some of that in-house, which he stated that we did. So always being mindful and aware of what our, where our opportunities lie and jump on that and accept it for what it is. As hard as it is, but accept it. And to stay focused on our key essentials, like our strategic plan, which, you know, we just saw it here with the CIO for IT, our mission to drive student success and continue to collaborate with community and corporate leaders because they're the ones that's letting us know what they need so that we can provide their needs. So, I mean, it was a fabulous one. And there was another session I went to, and this was a little different than what we do here. We, we have our five-year strategic plan, which is drawn out. And we stick to it by the letter and we're very good at it. All of our, all of our reports are dead on in, in accomplishing those goals. And these particular, these three particular colleges, one of which used to be a college, but they introduced a Baccalaureate program, so they had to change their name. Palm Beach State College is now their name. But these three, with, because of time, I didn't get a chance to ask all the questions I wanted to ask, but they relied on the four disciplines of execution, the Franklin Covey deal, the 4DX. And I thought it was interesting, but I knew it wouldn't apply to us just because the way we do things is different. But I celebrated what they did because they found a mechanism that worked for them to get the results they're looking for in driving student success, completion rates, retention level and engagement. And with their steadfast in nailing down their wig, widely, widely important goals, they, they succeeded. And I thought that was great for them. But, you know, I, I wanted to bring that here to say, hey, you know, there is not one way to achieve whatever it is. There's so many different avenues, as they say, you know, another way to skin a cat. So I didn't mean to say that, but yeah. But you understand what I'm saying. And it was actually really interesting. And I had the opportunity to speak to the president there of Palm, Palm Beach State and she helped me to understand why. So I won't get all into that, but just wanted to bring the highlights to it. It was very successful. There wasn't a lot of people there, I thought, in terms of the overall attendance. From what we heard at the General Assembly, there was maybe 1,700. But I think there used to be more than that. I hope the more, I hope that those that weren't able to attend will show up next year. But it's always a great success to go and listen. And, yeah, I'm going to, you know, dust, dust it off my shoulders here, but you know what? Washtenaw Community College is, is really doing it. I'm, and, and I'm saying it that way because we are. When you go to these, these conferences and you try to choose which session to sit in, to glean information from what other schools are doing, I won't say it's difficult, I won't say it's a challenge, but it lets, it lets you know where we are on that playing field. And we're up here. I won't say we're number one, because when you're number one, somebody is ready to knock you down, but there's space, there's room for others to reach the caliber of where we're at. And it's wonderful with the leadership that we have here, including the board, including the board. So be proudful of what you're doing. Continue to collaborate with your peers, with the community, with the corporate leaders, with students, because they're number one. And, because other schools are looking at us and trying to emulate us and we would want them to, because we want them all to be just as successful as we are. Yeah.
Go ahead, Eileen.
So I had a busy month. I want to bring to the board's attention that WTMC celebrated its 30th anniversary at the beginning of the month. And so that was a, a big accomplishment for them. They had a, a great get-together with individuals who had participated in WTMC's formation and its development and growth. They have about 800, 850 students and a waiting list. And so they are acutely aware of the good work that they are, are doing in Washtenaw County. So I also had the opportunity to attend the EV lab ribbon cutting and that was a great event. It was, it was great to be there and to see what was going on there. And this past weekend, Anthony Williamson, who is now a trustee on the WTMC board, invited me to participate in the Park Ridge Halloween event, which was a trunk and treat, and had the pleasure of parking next to a group called Supreme Felons. And they gave me the rundown on what they are doing in terms of the work that they are doing in the re-entering community for people who are moving back into work, getting training opportunities, getting housing, getting resituated back into the community. So those, those three events kind of stuck out. I also want to bring to the board's attention that there, in, in the event that you have not had the opportunity to hear about the WISD millage that is on the ballot next week, there is a recorded session that they provided. You can reach it on their website and they discuss their reasons for going forward with the millage request. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Any other remarks? Go ahead, Bill.
Follow on to that. I had had a couple of inquiries on WISD in, in the college and was it, was there a conflict? And I asked Holly Heveland about it. She's the board chair of the foundation and she sent me back a paragraph saying, no, there is no conflict there, that this had been carefully developed so that there would not be and that they were comfortable with it. And I think that correlates to what you're alluding to. Right. A couple of other American Community College trustee notes. Over three days, there were a bunch of sessions scheduled. They overlapped each other. Workforce development was something that I saw a great deal of and attended some sessions on. And I was, I was proud to announce with Kansas City Community College presentation that we had just cut the ribbon on a, an EV center here, which tied with a lot of the work that they're doing. They're doing a lot of apprenticeships at Kansas City Community College, including one with Tesla. And they have a relationship with Tesla in Austin, Texas whereby they're contractually engaged in training students in a 2,000 to 4,000-hour program at the end of two years, at which Tesla is gobbling up just about anybody that they can put through the pipeline. And with our EV lab in mind, I asked them if they would be willing to share that information. So I'm expecting to get information about Austin, Texas and how we can reach out and see if we can't get a Tesla apprenticeship program in conjunction with our EV lab here. So I've got, I've got some emails out and I'll keep you all posted in that, in that regard. Another, DuPage College in Illinois, near Chicago, more apprenticeship programs. They've got 28,000 students total. They've got about 40 different corporate relationships. They've got a Panasonic apprentice program there. And Panasonic can hardly wait to get the students through that pipeline to get them. So there were some great examples, had a lot of enthusiasm. And it's not as if we're asleep at the switch here, but these are some new ideas that we may be able to learn from and I'll be glad to share what I, information I can gather.
Any remarks from the board?
I want to say, I did a 10, I don't know what I did here. One was Jackson Community College President Dan Phelan. He and two other people from, I think it was a private school, did a nice presentation on AI and how they're looking at, every school is looking at AI and how they can utilize this information, but also to make sure that their, their staff and all the other people that, that work there understand what is going on, especially for the students, because it's confusing for them too. So, and I'm sorry, I left my materials at home. I was sitting on my table as I was walking out the door. So, but in any case, I'm just giving you that overview. But the main thing that I really concentrated on, as always, is the, the government update. And it was quite startling to hear some of the information that was being given regarding what the government is doing and not doing and what they've taken away. So there will be, there are really some slides. And if, if Vanessa can get ahold of those slides, that would be great because this, this is something that we all need to see. And, and what I'm talking about is directly from people who work directly with the White House and their staff. So this is new information. Some of it is old, but most of it is new. So if, if, and I can give you that information, Vanessa, but this is really important stuff. And I apologize because I did leave it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, go ahead, President.
Well, thank you. Well, first of all, I'd like to thank the trustee Milliken, trustee McKnight-Morton and Vice Chair Davis for attending ACCT. I, and I appreciate the time because I know this is a volunteer board. You have lives, you have jobs, and I, I really do appreciate that. We all do. So thank you. Also, I, I want to give a shout-out to our treasurer. Thank you so much for meeting with us. I really appreciate that. Trustee DeVarty, Treasurer DeVarty, for meeting with us, going through our finances, spending time. I just really would like everyone to know that we go through everything that even has coming before you that has a cost to it. And you know Dave. So we go through it with a fine tooth comb. And I really appreciate your time and your questions. And also, I appreciate you, Terry, for being ready and prepared. So I appreciate that. Trustee Peck, thank you for meeting with us. We had a meeting with trustee Peck where we had the opportunity to answer some questions and she shared some information that was really very informative, especially that video, which I shared today with a team about a, where was the school? Oh, my gosh.
It's Georgia Tech.
Georgia Tech, where it was a building giving back to the community. So you'll just have to wait for the master planning process to see some of that information. So that was really very helpful. I'd like to mention, talking about workforce, everything workforce. We're having a, a soft opening, November 18th. It's a soft opening, so, you know, like a restaurant has a soft opening. We're having a soft opening of our Workforce Solutions Skills Lab. You will see it in our, on the record. It's in the area of continuing education. It will be a lab that is free to our community. And it's to prepare, and prepare people with basic. a lab that is free to our community. And it's to prepare, and prepare people with basic, basic skills to prepare to enter the workforce. So it's, it's a, it's like a self-paced lab, and we're really excited about that. Now, it is open. If someone is coming from outside of the community, there is a fee for them. But if you're a community member, we're aligning that with business and industry, the basic skills that they need to get into a union, all of those types of things. That's what we're working with. So we're excited about, again, that's a soft opening to just see how that's working out. Like to congratulate our faculty member Glenn Kay, who is honored as an outstanding faculty member with the TRENCE Conference in Occupational Studies. So we'd like to thank him for that. He's a welding teacher. Manufacturing Day was very successful here. We, how many, over 200 people, right? 220 students were here. And they, you probably could see it on our, you know, I'd like to thank, really, I'd like to thank anyone who's doing our social media, Lori. I don't know if any of you hadn't a chance to look at our social media. I mean, things that I miss, I get to see it on social media. So that was a great, the, the display of what happened at, that Manufacturing Day was great. 220 students. We partnered with business and industries for mechatronics, CNC, welding, hands-on activities. Also like to thank the trustees that could make it to our battery lab, EV battery lab grand opening. I'd like to thank Congresswoman Debbie Dingell for helping getting us the funds, as well as Senators Peter and Stabenow for their work. And Brandon, thank, thank you for your effort and your team in putting it together, as well as Lori with the marketing team, and Vanessa for making sure that we were all ready, and of course, Dean Zomalsky. November 11th is Veterans Day. I hope you will be able to join us at, you know, at the flag raising at sunrise. Not my favorite thing. The Veterans Day is a good thing, but I'm not too crazy about the sunrise part. But I will see you there. Anyway, of course, everyone's welcome. And Economic Club is November 13th. So please put that on your calendar. And Unmasking Possibilities, our gala is on November 9th, and we will be celebrating our 40th anniversary for the foundation at that time. And lastly, I want to thank Pete Laskovich. Pete is our dean of Strategic Enrollment Management. Do I have his title correct? Strategic Enrollment Management? And, pardon me? And Student Experience. You here are, so Pete leads the team. It's called the Strategic Enrollment Planning Team. People here at this table are part of that team, but he leads that team. So we have finance on the team, Brandon's on the team, of course Linda's on the team, Clarence is on the team, I'm not going to say their right names, Lori's on the team for marketing, a dean, I believe, is on the team, Kendall, someone else for marketing. Those, that's how our numbers, so they determine the strategies that we are going to put in place in order to keep our enrollment where it's at. And they, they get, again, it's not just them, because it takes quality instruction, it takes good student services, it takes a nice camp, you know, everything's got to work to make it happen. But this is the team that sets that strategy that everyone works towards. So we look at everything. I just want you to know, you see, marketing, we look at how many new apps did we get? How many new impressions did we get on the web? How many, how has all of this, where should we be going? How, what, we look at the numbers. Oh, gee, we're down in adults at a certain age, 25-year-olds. Oh, what kind of curriculum is it that they'd be interested in? I mean, I'm simplifying it. But so it's, and Pete, and the reason I want to shout out to Pete is because Pete, he's one of those people that started here as a GED student and has gone through all the different phases and was just promoted to this job last year, and he is remarkable. So when you see him, please congratulate him and thank him. And thank you to the rest of you as well. Thank you.
Very much.
Yes.
Was there an event for former trustees?
Us, but for WTMC.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to tab E, approval of the fiscal year '25 audit. The recommendation is that the board of trustees approve the fiscal year '25 audit as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved that we approve the audit?
Support.
Any discussion on this? Go ahead.
I just want to say for people that may be viewing this at a later viewing, since it's recorded, the audit was brought to us last meeting and with very favorable report from our auditor, and it's an easy vote to accept a report as submitted, and the audit is submitted, and I will be voting for it.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on it? Okay. Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Tara Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Trejer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you. Tab F, the Argo software renewal. The recommendation is that the board of trustees approve the three-year renewal of the Invisions Argo Software License Agreement effective December 1st, 2025, through November 30th, 2028, in an amount not to exceed 156,739. Do I hear a motion?
So moved, support.
Thank you. Any discussion on this? Questions? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Tara Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Trejer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you. Tab G, the Salesforce Contract Renewal. The recommendation is that the board of trustees approve a renewal of the Salesforce Licensing Contract for three years in the amount of 388,218, covering from November 1st, 2025, through October 31st, 2028. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Any questions or discussion on this? Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Tara Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Trejer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you. Tab H, Approval of the Capital Outlay Plan. President Blaca, did you want to say anything on this first?
Yes, I did. I do. As you know, just remind the trustees, this is the annual plan that we submit to the Department of Budget and Management. But part of this plan is where you have an opportunity to present a concept, and a concept if we were able to get additional funds. Now, it's not a guarantee, as you know. We don't even know if there's going to be funding available. So this is only a concept. And to remind you that you're, if you do approve this tonight, which I hope you do, you're only approving the concept, not the whole thing, because there's a lot more that goes into this before that. But you asked a question last week, last month, and you said that you wanted to know about testing. And so Linda has a report to bring you up to date about testing here at the college. Yes, we gave you Q and As as well.
So there was an FAQ put together on testing center, but I'm just going to do the highlights, and hopefully this will answer some of the questions that came up when we talked about the capital outlay. And so the materials are, the FAQ is in your board materials, but just a couple highlights. So, so we have multiple testing centers on our campus. We have the primary center, which is in Student Center. We have a certification testing center that's in this building. We also have a prometric testing center for our SCENI certification, which is in TI. And then we also do testing in the LA, in our Learning Support Services area, for any students who need accommodations for their testing. Who's eligible to use our testing centers? Our currently enrolled students, prospective students who might be needing their placement test as part of their admission process, community members who are completing certification and licensure exams, and also students from other colleges and universities who may be taking exams that need to be proctored. Just to give you a sense of the number of tests that we administered in '24-'25, in the Student Center, the main testing area, we had close to 27,000 academic course exams that were proctored. We had an additional 1,280 certification and licensure exams, and then over 5,700 placement exams, like our Compass, no, excuse me, our Accuplacer and Alex testing for placement. In our ML Certification Center in this building, last year we did over 3,600 certification and licensure exams. In the TI building, just, we have 96 WCC students who did their SCENI certification. We also had non-WCC students who used that center as well, in addition to those 96. We don't get the data. The schools that sent those get that data. In our Learning Support Services area, so again, individuals who need testing with accommodations, last year they did over 1,100 exams that were proctored. So over the course of '24-'25, we had 38,720 exams that were administered in all the testing centers across campus. How do non-WCC students find WCC testing centers? When community members search for a location, if they're looking for a particular certification exam, or looking for where's a certified testing center, WCC appears in that search as an option for them to pick. Our testing centers are funded through primarily our institutional operating budget. We do not charge, some community colleges actually charge for placement testing, we do not. We charge $30 per test for proctoring our academic exams from other schools, and the cost for our certification exams will vary by the certifying agency. So the impact of the, on the SC testing center of the capital outlay project, the potential, I'll say the potential impact. If the capital outlay project receives funding from the state, and if the Student Center building is renovated, the SC testing center would be permanently relocated to an optimally designed space in the GM building. The GM location would provide a more accessible space for WCC students and our community for that testing center.
I would like to thank you for asking the question, because I had no idea that we did 38,000 tests annually. That is a lot. So thank you.
Go ahead, Bill.
Do any of the individuals that come here for testing end up enrolling at WCC? Are we a magnet for people that all of a sudden say, what a great institution, I want to go here?
Right. So certainly, sometimes those certification exams, those can be articulated for credit towards their, their college programs. And so some of them say, have a really good experience. And, and then when they're, certainly when they're coming in and doing their placement test, you know, they're coming in to enroll and become students after they do their placement test. But a lot of times, those certification exams will lead to enrollment with us.
Thank you for putting that together about the testing center and for giving us a, a kind of concept for what might happen to it. And I have a couple of things about the, the plan. Corrections, I mean, it talks about most of the, what is it? The majority of the space in the SC building, in the building is administrative, and it really isn't. There's several places where it says most of the space is occupied by administration, and it's only 40% that's occupied by administration. And, you know, I just don't want us to be... Yeah, we, yeah, exactly. It's a correction. And reducing the size, there was, the administration would be consolidated. That was important to put in there, too. And so I, you know, it's fine. And I think, I appreciate the work done for this testing center. With the larger picture, I'm still incredibly concerned. I mean, I taught here for 30 years, been on the board for a couple. Never has the integrity of our academic courses been challenged. And it has been this year through online courses that were not proctored. And I worry about that. I mean, 50, what is it? Your statistics said 56% of our students intend to transfer. If the transfer line gets cut because we are not being academically integrity, have an academic integrity with testing, which we didn't have this year once, if that gets cut, that's a lot of students who aren't going to transfer, who won't be able to transfer. And once U of M decides, we can't accept that credit, others will fall in line. I'm worried about that. I'm worried about our academic integrity in terms of testing. The teachers know how to do it. I mean, I'm not, I'm not criticizing the, the classroom work. I'm, I'm criticizing the testing facility, especially for online classes. Online seems to be a, it's a great way to get an A in count, in, in some English class, because there's nobody watching. And now with AI, we have to, we have to prepare ourselves for that. It's never on our goals and objectives. Nothing on that had anything to do with academic integrity. I've never seen it on anything that comes to us, and I'd like to put it on the agenda.
Well, we can discuss that even more.
Yeah.
One, and this is not a response to you.
No, no.
I just want to make sure what I say, I don't want you to think, because I think it's a good conversation that we should have.
Always had incredible integrity in our academic performance, and it's beginning to slip, and I'm worried about it.
I hope that's only a perception.
Yeah.
And not the reality.
Well, U of M's perceptions are important.
And we do have that academic guarantee, the student guarantee, which we're, we just revisited, right, Larry? The assurance, what's the policy called? The assurance, student assurance of something? I don't know if you're familiar with it, trustee Peck. It's, I love this. Where if a student takes a class and they transfer, and they're not doing well in the subsequent class, then they should let, they let us know, and we're going to bring that to the surface again, so that, you know, our employers understand that that, so if they go to work, and they, let's say they trained for a certain class, and they can't do the skill that we said they can do, then the employer can work with us, and the student can take that class for free up to, I don't know how many hours. I don't remember the whole thing. But we will bring that forward again and take a look at it. But, so we'll continue having this conversation, but I respect your opinion.
Any other questions or comments on capital outlay? Okay. The recommendation is that the board of trustees approve the five-year capital outlay plan for fiscal years 2027 to 2031 as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. And any other discussion? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Tara Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Trejer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to tab I, the purchase of a mobile classroom trailer. The recommendation is that the board of trustees approve a contract with MRA for the purchase and outfitting of a 53-foot double expandable trailer in an amount not to exceed 460,000. Do I hear a motion? Any discussion or questions on the trailer? It's going to look awesome.
Yeah, cookouts with it? Tailgating with it?
We have sleepovers?
Okay, thank you. Hearing none. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Tara Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Trejer DeVarty?
DeVarty, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee Peck?
Yes.
Thank you. Tab J, Approval of Trustee Policy 2120, the articulation policy. The recommendation is that the board of trustees approve the proposed changes to Board of Trustee Policy 2120, articulation policy as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions on this? Go ahead, Ruth.
I'm just real excited that these keep coming.
Yeah, it's good. Yes, all good. Any other questions? Any other questions? Thank you. Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer Devardy?
Devardy, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Thank you. Tab K, approval of trustee policy 3033, the college certificate structure. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the proposed changes to Board of Trustees Policy 3033, college certificate structure policy as submitted. Do I hear a motion?
A motion.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer Devardy?
Devardy, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Tab L, new business items. First up, the TransAct Campus Payment System Recommendation, VP Barnes.
Yes, as all of you know, we have over 10,000 students here every semester, and every semester we have to collect the tuition and fees from those students. So that would be quite the undertaking if we didn't have some back, what I would call back office software to, to help us do that. So we currently have a system, but with the migration to Banner SaaS, we thought it was a good opportunity to take a look and reevaluate what we, what we have because we're going to be having to create an interface with that system in Banner SaaS. So we took a look at our software. And what the software does, it helps us collect credit card payments. We can also collect payments by phone. We can collect them in person. And it also does things like help us keep track of payment plans. So sometimes students can't pay the whole balance upfront, so they need a payment plan. So you can imagine, you know, there's thousands of students. This is complex to manage. So this time, kind of software helps us do that. On top of that, there's a lot of, when you get into credit cards and banking, there's a lot of regulations. So we have to make sure that we're following all of those regulations, which again, this software helps ensure that we do. So one final thing, we do also use this software not only for tuition and fees, but there are lots of events on campus, like the Washington Economic Club that's coming up in November. For people to register for these campus events and they have certain fees associated, we can create what we call storefronts. So the department involved can create kind of their own little website to help collect the entrance fees or whatever the fees may be to go to a particular event. And we've had, with our current software, we thought there was room for opportunity to, to improve what we currently have. So we did an RFP, we went out, we got the bids back, and we unanimously thought that TransAct Campus was the best, was the best approach. They have a very user-friendly mobile interface, very modern approach, and they're also very cost-effective. They came in at under $60,000. And we have a few contracts that are managing this now, but the, what we're paying now total is about $112,000 for a few different contracts. So we're going to be able to reduce that $112,000 to 60, have more capability. And based on the references, because we checked all the references and we called even Wayne State University as well, who's here local, and they all raved about TransAct. So we, we think it's going to be a very cost-effective, very customer service-oriented company. It's going to help us improve what we currently have. So that's what we're asking the Board for, is to approve this. It's a contract over five years, it would be $319,000 and just under $60,000 in the first year with a 3% escalator.
To clarify, can a community, can you create a storefront for a community nonprofit? Somebody who's booked the facility? Do you do it for a third party or to whom the storefronts belong?
No, no, the storefronts are for internal departments. So if they're having an event that there's some kind of fee for, maybe there's a theater event and we're charging those kinds of storefronts.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Tab M, the creative dining contract removal, or renewal, rather, VP Barnes.
Yes, so for those of you that had dinner tonight, that was Creative Dining. We, we, we have gotten rave reviews since we started working with Creative Dining here in ML about four years ago. So we actually started with them in June of 2021. We had previously been with Aramark pre-COVID, but we started working with them in June of 2021. They were only doing the dining services in the Student Center. At the time, we were doing the renovations here in ML and so forth. So we started out with a contract for $239,000 over five years to manage our dining services for the students. About a year later, we added another four-year contract for $100,000 for Creative Dining to manage our catering business, basically the events here at the ML Building primarily, and trade unions and so forth. So they've been what I would call an exemplary partner. I mean, they have been very flexible. They have helped, they have helped us increase the revenues through great service, great ideas in terms of how to facilitate the dining in the Student Center. The students now get through the lines faster, they have more options. And over here at the, at the ML Building, again, the food has been spectacular. I get emails from all, all the time, I'm sure President Belanca does as well, raving about how good the food and services. So we're asking here to renew. Now, I would point out that previously, when the contract started in 2021, the sales were only about $200,000 a year. And that was, again, that was during COVID, so they were understandably low. But even pre-COVID, we were selling a total of about $800,000 a year in total food across the campus. So that's what Creative Dining started with. What we're expecting to have this year is 2.8 million. So we have gone from 800,000 pre-COVID to 2.8 million in the span of five, six years. So Creative Dining, their proposal, they've, they've proposed an increase, a total increase of about 15%, which, which again, the outstanding service that we get from them and the business has more than tripled. I think, you know, it takes a lot of manpower and effort to manage that business, which they, which they're very proactive. We often don't even have to ask them to do something, they're already on top of it. So what we're asking for here is a five-year contract for $485,000 over the five years. So the first year is $91,000 with a $3,000 escalator per year over the five-year period.
Any questions or comments on this? Go ahead, Angela.
Oh, he, oh, Bill was first.
Bill first.
How many people does Creative Dining employ to provide this exceptional service?
I mean, I, I mean, they're really good and I just.
I don't know.
I know.
Between 40 and 50 people.
Oh, that's amazing.
Big the kitchen.
Yeah, yeah. Didn't mean to throw a curve at you.
No, no worries.
Thank you.
I know it's none of our business, I guess, I don't know. But do you know if they use, if they have like student workers there, chefs, if you, if you will?
Well, they do have student workers. They don't have any chefs per se, but they do have people in the kitchen and they do have people helping with serving and that sort of thing, yes.
So when a student applies for, for Pell Grant, what is it called? Thank you. It's been a long time since I've been in school. Work-study, any of our students happen? Do you know if they're working on their, with them?
To my knowledge, they're not work-study students, no.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, they're just employed.
Okay, thank you.
Dave?
I think this is well-deserved and it's recognition. I think we want to keep them. And I know when Terry, you and I talked about this and looked, I looked really favorably on it as having grown up in food service because my dad was a restaurateur and I started bussing tables in junior high school. The, I think this is well-deserved and look forward to supporting it at the next meeting. Additionally, having toured our kitchen facilities, I hope we will enable them to further increase their service capacity by talking to them about how we might partner with them to improve the kitchen facilities that we provide for them to work out of. Because they work out of a kitchen that is very, it's not very big. It's, it could be upgraded. It's, there's a lot that could happen there that would improve their capacity to serve the people that use this facility in the future. And I'd like us to see whatever we can do to partner with them to make that happen.
We'll evaluate that.
Any other questions or comments here? Okay, thank you. Okay, tab N, the proposed changes to Board Policy 4052, the loan privileges policy for the WCC library, EVPI Tucker.
Good evening again. What you have for you is a recommendation to update a policy which has not been updated in 22 years. So if we think about the time 22 years ago, while the internet was here, there was not really digital media. People were coming to the library or learning resources area for physical print books. And this updated review for you tonight is really bringing us in line with what is the current practice of our library, that we have, of course, both print, and we've made a commitment not to get away from our 60,000-plus books that we have in the library, but that digital media is here and eBooks and electronic resources and digital libraries, as well as subscriptions. Wall Street Journal, New York Times, that our students and faculty have access to, that we want to make sure this policy represents current usage today. In addition, the previous board policy was very vague on fees and fines. So we wanted to bring that more in alignment with what we actually would charge a fee or fine for, right? Overdue, lost, or damaged materials. So this is really an update, bringing it into alignment with current practice and the, our use of technology that we have going on. Happy to answer any questions at the board behalf.
Questions? Go ahead, Dave.
I know we have a, I'm really enthusiastic about our OERs that we make available. This doesn't really speak to that. I don't know if it should or if it's spoken to in other places. But, and I know there's also an OER conference on Friday next week that I hope to come to and take a look at and that will bring other campuses, other people from around the state to look at OER, to talk about OERs. And really having it on our campus puts us in the position of leadership in this area. Should that be, should that open educational resource thing be addressed in here or not?
We feel that it is addressed two ways, via the digital collection because it would be considered a digital collection. It presently would live within one of our Canvas course shelves, i.e. the digital. But in addition, we do have a small number, and with the recently awarded OER grant, we'll have a larger number of printed OER materials. So it's covered both ways via the multimedia and then the also print. You know, with that grant, we'll be able to print every OER that we presently have to have at least a reference copy for students. So it is covered via both the print and the digital reference.
Thank you.
Ruth? I was just going to add that the librarians contribute to the faculty production of the OER. They're the, you know, they know the rules, they know the regulations, and they do that. But it's the departments and faculty that produce them.
Correct.
Absolutely. Couldn't do it without them, couldn't do without their support.
Eileen?
Just a, I have a comment and a question. In the last line, the library shall develop and maintain reasonable and appropriate loan procedures, that seems kind of vague. And I'm wondering whether or not those reasonable and appropriate procedures are going to be incorporated at some point into this particular policy.
That'd be more of an administrative procedure. The reasonable and appropriate loan procedure regulations reference is original language. And we wanted to at least add to the fact that we're going to maintain them, not just develop them, because they, they do evolve, right? So when we think about being able to check out, think about early childhood education reference material, what was just developing it 20 years ago, now we have to maintain it because that's shifting. We now have a children's collection, if you haven't been to the library, sure am I. It's now a children's collection that, partnering with faculty and our librarians, that there is some timing, that they can't just keep the book all semester, maybe keep it for a couple of weeks. That's just one example. But that, those are more administrative procedures that happen within the department.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay, we have a couple of action items. First, tab O, membership in the West Michigan Health Alliance pool. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees approve the college's membership in WMHIP effective January 1st, 2026, for a minimum of three years. Taking action now would allow the college to proceed with the health insurance and benefits open enrollment planning for the 26, 2026 calendar year. Do I hear a motion? So moved.
I have a question. Since this is the first time we're seeing this, do we need to make a motion to take action on it? Is a separate thing?
Because we approved the agenda this evening.
Okay, so that was implicit in that?
Yeah.
For our policy, with multiple readings, you would, but this is not.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions? I'm sorry. Yeah, we had a move and support, any questions?
No, no questions.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Vanessa, please call the roll. All right, go ahead, Dave.
I do want to, I had the opportunity to talk about this with our CFO and the president, and it strikes me that this is a win-win for the staff and for the administration, for the college, because it reduces the cost for staff. And there has been consultation with unions, leadership, I believe, and you verified that when we met earlier. And to me, that's important, that the, that the people that are affected by this are, have been at the table and have given their sensibility about it. So given that, I'm enthusiastically in support of this.
It was all employee groups, not just the unions, including independents.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, it's quite timely.
Right.
Any other questions or comments? Vanessa, please call the roll.
Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer Devardy?
Devardy, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton?
Yes.
Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Trustee Pack?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everybody. Tab P, schedule of the monthly board meetings. The recommendation is that the Board of Trustees establish and hold a retreat on Thursday, November 20th, 2025 at 6:00 PM in Room 150 in the Martin, I'm sorry, Morris Lawrence Building at Washington Community College, located at 4800 East Huron River Drive, Ann Arbor. Do I hear a motion?
A motion.
Any discussion or questions on this? Okay, Vanessa, please call the roll.
Chair Fleming?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Treasurer Devardy?
Devardy, yes.
Secretary Hatcher?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight Morton? Trustee Milliken?
Yes.
Any other votes? Okay. All right, thank you, everybody. Adjournment of our meeting. I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn the monthly meeting.
So moved.
Support.
Support, thank you. I thought we were going to spend the night in that new trailer we're getting, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The meeting is adjourned.